It is six o'clock. We will go ahead and call the meeting into order. If Pastor Lindell Lee, Sr., could come forward, if you would, please stand. Pastor Lindell is in the invocation.
Father, we want to thank you for these leaders who invest in this community and willing to give themselves. We pray for them tonight. We pray for this session. God, we pray that you give them courage to make the hard choices if they have to, and wisdom so that they'll know what those choices are, and we pray that they have compassion. Father, that they would serve as they want to do. And Lord, we pray that they would be profitable. And Lord, the things they do will benefit this community they want, the way they want these things to benefit us. Thank you for them. Lead them. Bless this night and days coming, and we'll thank you for that, and we pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. This time, Councilmember Bryant will lead us into pledges.
Adoring me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. We do have one proclamation. It's not a proclamation for anyone here. It is actually the mayors of Lubbock, Abilene, San Angelo, Midland, Odessa, and Big Springs are all supporting our friends in El Paso. With the horrific shooting happened, all the mayors from West Texas reached out to El Paso and had just a few words for them. "We're here. We care for you, and you're in our prayers." I did offer the full support of the city of Odessa if they needed anything because I heard the mayor speak, and he was talking about he was going to 20-plus funerals, which is horrible. So I do want to read this proclamation. It says, "City of Odessa proclamation. Whereas our city is shocked and saddened by the death of 22 people and injuries to many others on August 3rd, 2019, in the city of El Paso, Texas. These people were sons and daughters, mothers and fathers, sisters and brothers, husbands, wives, family, and friends of people left behind in this tragedy. The multiple law enforcement agencies who responded to the situation displayed courage and prepared response skills that warranted recognition and gratitude. And every life is valuable, no matter a person's individual beliefs, ethnicity, occupation, political views, cultural choices, geographic origin, or nationality. El Paso is a city with a rich history in our state, with strong economic and educational impact for our future, with a valued portrayal of international trade, tourism, cultural development, and most importantly, it is a home to over 680,000 fellow Texans. El Paso is the largest city in West Texas region and a valued partner in leading our West Texas region. West Texans stand together in the face of difficulty, including the devastating heartbreak and struggle to move forward and face the emotional realities of searching for new normals, where life will never be the same. And West Texas is our collaborative home, and we value safety and security of that home for all West Texans. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of Odessa, Texas, do hereby proclaim August 12th through the 18th, 2019, is El Paso Strong. Throughout the city of Odessa, I urge all citizens to stand behind the people and the leadership of our sister West Texas City as they grieve, move forward, and stand strong in the future and a safe and secure for all people. We call on all citizens to carry the El Paso and for every affected by this tragedy in their thoughts and prayers." So we are going to send this to city leaders of El Paso with our prayers in deepest sympathies. So next, we will move to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Thank you, Ms. Waldorf. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under other council actions, we are actually going to change the agenda briefly to move item 13, which is consider approving a contract granting an economic development incentive to Rack Industries, LLC, for a total grant of 2.757294. Mr. Burnett?
Mayor members of the council, appreciate you very much moving this item up to the front of the agenda. I don't know why I got such special treatment except I asked, so I appreciate that very much, and it's an honor to be here tonight to present this project. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at the contract. The ODC board did approve this in their July board meeting for an incentive to Rack Industries. Corner of Murphy and Crane in Odessa, it's a local business expansion. They're going to be adding 59 new jobs, retaining 34 jobs, and adding over $7 million in payroll over the next five years, so along with an eight-plus million capital investment in their facilities. So we're excited about this project. It is a local business expansion. The ODC board members were excited as well as a recommendation from their compliance committee, which, as you hopefully know, vets every project, looks at every detail of the project, makes sure that it fits well into our economy in Odessa, and they recommended this job creation grant for the 34 retained jobs and the 59 new jobs spread out over five years in Odessa. So we are excited and would ask for your consideration in a positive way tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Burnett?
Was that unanimous?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. No more questions. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, we move to public hearings. We will open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of PTCAA Texas.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This first request is a voluntary annexation. This is staying with the councils recommending that annexations be voluntary. The property involved in the request is located in the northwest corner of the intersection of Kermit Highway and West Loop 338. A commercial and industrial use development, in this case, a truck stop and related uses, is currently under construction on this site, and land use in the general area does consist of commercial and industrial use development, vacant land. The applicant and the owner of the property is the PTCAA Texas LP, and the purpose of the annexation request is to incorporate approximately 7.1 acres into the city of Odessa. The current area of the city limits is approximately 52 square miles. The total area of this request is approximately 7.1 acres, and this does put the area of the request within annexation statutes that allow a maximum annual annexation of up to 30 percent of the city limits area. The City of Odessa Comprehensive Plan states that the city should strive for orderly city boundaries and utility service areas. Annexing properties that are adjacent to existing city limits lines would be considered a logical boundary extension, and would be a logical extension of city limit lines. A service plan for the proposed annexation has been prepared by the legal staff in accordance with state law requirements. Also, in conjunction with this request, there's also an original zoning request that would incorporate light industrial zoning. This zoning is fitting with adjacent land uses. It is not contrary to the land use plan of the City of Odessa's Comprehensive Master Plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request for annexation and original zoning of light industrial, and I might state that this is the first reading of the ordinance, and the council has heard two public hearings on this request, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Brennely? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 2, we will open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Collingwood Management. Mr. Brennely?
Yes, sir. There were 10 notices sent out related to this request. We did not have any notices returned. We did not receive a written protest or a written approval related to this request. And the property involved in the request is located northeast of the intersection of Southeast Loop 338 and Trunk Street. This site is currently designated future development. It is occupied by commercial and industrial use development, and the property is surrounded by industrial use development and related uses. The applicant and property owner in this case is Collingwood Management, and the purpose of the original zoning request of light industrial would facilitate commercial and industrial use development on this property. The proposed original zoning is not contrary to the established land uses in this area. It is not contrary to the land use plan of the City of Odessa's Comprehensive Plan, and the proposed original zoning is not out of scale with the needs of this neighborhood or the city. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request of light industrial, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Brennely? Okay. There's no questions. This is a public hearing, so I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Didi Pavlik and Keith Janikowski. Mr. Brennely?
Yes, sir. There was also 10 notices sent out related to this request. We did not receive a notice returned, and we did receive one written protest related to this request. The property involved in the request is located northeast of the West Highway 80 Service Road and West Second Street intersection. This site is currently designated future development, and it is occupied by a commercial and industrial use structure. The property is surrounded by industrial development and related uses. The applicants in this case are Didi Pavlicek owner, and Keith Janikowski is the optionee, and the purpose of the original zoning request of light industrial would facilitate a commercial and industrial use development on this property. In this particular case, the proposed use is a kennel and a dog training facility, and that would be an appropriate use for this area. The proposed original zoning is not contrary to the established land uses in this area. It is not contrary to the land use plan of the City of Odessa's Comprehensive Master Plan. The proposed original zoning is not out of scale with the needs of this neighborhood and not out of scale with the needs of the city. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request of light industrial zoning, and planning staff does concur with this recommendation, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions from council?
Was there any explanation on the protest?
Yeah, there was. The person that protested said they did not think this was inside the city, and they didn't want the tank battery disturbed. The tank battery is about 200 feet north of this, and it's not going to be disturbed, and it is in the city.
Is it an active tank batter?
Yes, sir, it is. There's actually a battery unit on there.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. If you could just give us your name and your address.
Thank you, Mayor. Keith Janikowski, 2717 Brazos Avenue, Odessa, Texas. Here on behalf of Didi Pavlicek, and I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Are there any questions from council?
Great call.
Like the shirt.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this? If not, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 4, we'll open a public hearing to consider the request of LeCo Energy and Investments. Mr. Brennely?
Yes, sir. There were 69 notices related to this request sent out. One notice was returned, and we did receive two written protests related to the request. The property involved in the request is northeast of the intersection of Dawn Avenue and Boise Drive. The site is currently designated future development. It is vacant. Land use in the area does consist of single-family residential development and vacant land. The applicant in this case is LeCo Energy and Investments. They do own the property. LCA is acting as the agent in this case, and the purpose of the original zoning request of special dwelling district would facilitate the development of 360 single-family residential lots, and these lots will average approximately 5,500 square feet in area. The proposed original zoning request is not contrary to the established land uses in the area, and it's also not contrary to the City of Odessa's Comprehensive Master Plan. The proposed zoning district will be located near other single-family development, and it will be an extension of the three existing zonings and single-family residential developments that's west, south, and east of this site. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request. Planning staff does concur with the recommendation for special dwelling district zoning on this property. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from council?
And the protests were?
The protest was related to possible uses that could go in at SPD. One of them was like a electric substation. That is not proposed for this area, and the other was for like some of the accessory business uses that could go in there if a resident so chose in the future, but that's what it was.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions from council? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 5, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Odessa Housing Finance Corporation. Mr. Brennely?
Yes, sir. We had three notices sent out related to this request. We did not receive any notices returned, and we did receive a written approval. The property involved in this request is located south of the intersection of Hunter Miller Way and 87th Street. The site is zoned special dwelling district and is vacant. Land uses in the area do consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicant and the property owner in this case is Odessa Housing Finance Corporation. LCA is acting as the agent, and the purpose of the rezoning request from special dwelling district to multifamily one would facilitate the expansion of the existing affordable apartment complex that's located just north of this site. The proposed rezoning request is not contrary to the established land uses in the general area or the land use plan of the City of Odessa's Master Plan. The proposed rezoning of multifamily one will facilitate the development of the Phase Two of Affordable Rent Multifamily Residential Project. This will consist of 216 units, and it will complement proposed adjacent, proposed affordable single-family residential development. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and planning staff does concur with the recommendation of multifamily one zoning. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 6, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Noel Land and Minerals. Mr. Brennely?
Yes, sir. City mailed out 26 notices related to this request. We did not have any notices returned. We did receive one written protest and one written approval. The property involved in the request is northeast of the intersection of Parks Lagado Road and La Campaña Drive. The site is currently vacant. It is zoned special dwelling district. Land use in the area does consist of hotel development, or single-family residential development, and multifamily residential development. The applicant in this case is Noel Land and Minerals, LLC. They are the owner. LCA is the agent, and the purpose of the rezoning request from special dwelling district to planned development office would facilitate the development of a medical office complex on this property. The proposed rezoning request is not contrary to established land uses in the general area or the land use plan for the City of Odessa's Master Plan. The proposed zoning district would be located near a multifamily development as well as single-family residential development to the south, and this is the Vista del Norte subdivision. And the medical office complex would be a good transitional development to act as a buffer between the multifamily and the single-family. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request with the following conditions. There would be a requirement for a decorative masonry screening fence to be placed along property lines that are adjacent to single-family developments, and the screening fences will need to be compatible to the existing neighborhood screening fences in the area. All lighting would be shielded as to prevent bleed over to adjacent properties. Maximum height of any light pole would not exceed 30 feet. All uses that's allowed in the zoning or office zoning district would be allowed with the exception of a restaurant use. All other development standards and building setbacks would be the same as those that's set in the office zoning district. All buildings would be restricted to two stories in height, and a site plan approval would be required prior to development of the property. And be happy to answer any questions.
Was that unanimous by them?
By the Planning and Zoning Commission? Yes, sir, it was.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Okay. So this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 7, open a public hearing to consider the approval by the request of Alfonso and Esther Leal. Mr. Brennely?
Yes, sir. City mailed out 21 notices related to this request. We did not have any notices returned, and we did receive one written approval. The property involved in the request is located at the northwest and southwest corner of the intersection of South Crane Avenue and Martine's Place. The site is currently zoned light industrial. It is vacant. Land use in the general area does consist of mobile home residential development and retail development and related uses. The applicants in this case are Alfonso and Esther Leal. They own the property, and JARB Holdings is the optionee, and the purpose of the rezone request from light industrial to single-family four would facilitate single-family residential development on this property and related uses, and the property is already platted, and the lots do have an average size of approximately 7,000 square feet, and there are 13 lots involved in this request. The proposed rezoning request is not contrary to the established land uses in the general area or the land use plan of the City of Odessa's Comprehensive Master Plan. It will be an expansion of the existing residential development that's northwest of this property, and the proposed rezoning and development would be a needed infill use development of an unused site, and it will consist of affordable single-family residential homes. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request of single-family four zoning, and planning staff does concur with that recommendation.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council?
Single-family four, could you explain that?
Yes, sir. That relates to the setbacks involved for the main structures on the property, and in this case, there would be a 20-feet front yard setback. This would allow rear entry into the property and driveways, yes, sir, to make it a lot easier instead of having to come directly off South Crane Avenue.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 8, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by JCF Inc., owner's S.W. Howell agent. Mr. Brennely?
Yes, sir. City mailed out 25 notices related to this request. We did not receive any notices returned. We did see one written approval. The property involved in this request is located southwest of the intersection of Morris Road and Southwest County Road. It is currently designated future development, and it is occupied by industrial use development. Land use in the general area does consist of industrial development and related uses and vacant land. The applicant and property owner is JCF Incorporated, and S.W. Howell is acting as the agent in this case, and the purpose of the original zoning request of light industrial is to establish the zoning for this property and allow for the expansion of the existing uses on this site. The proposed original zoning is not contrary to the established land uses in this area, nor is it contrary to the land uses that are proposed in the City of Odessa's Comprehensive Master Plan. The proposed zoning is not out of scale with the needs of this area and the city, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request. Planning staff does concur with the recommendation of original zoning of light industrial. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Brennely.
Thank you, Mr. Brennely.
Next, we move to ordinances. Consider codifying the current downtown infrastructure and facade grant guidelines used for ODC grants and amending the Odessa City Code, Chapter 11. Mr. Carroll?
Good evening. Mayor Turner and City Council. Thank you for having me up here. This proposed ordinance is just a codification of both the facade and the infrastructure grant program that we created through downtown that's gone to ODC. The other parts of this include how the board is put together, as well as the approval process from application to the end. This is also the first reading of this proposed ordinance. Are there any questions regarding it?
Any questions from council? Okay. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, sir.
Item 10, consider and take action on the ordinance of authorizing the issuance of City of Odessa, Texas' combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation Series 2019 in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 93 million. Levy a tax and provide the payment thereof authorizing the execution and delivery of purchases contracting relating to said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of paying agent registrar agreement, authorizing the approval of an official statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto. Ms. Muntzey?
You did a great job. Mayor and council, this is the ordinance to approve the issuance of the CO issues. I would like to bring up Eric Mahal with Hilltop Securities to discuss the pricing that took place on these. We went over this in briefing, and y'all were interested in having this presented, so I will ask Eric to come on up.
Mayor, council, as mentioned, Eric Mahal with Hilltop Securities, and we wanted to provide some information, more or less hot off the press, based on yesterday's pricing of the certificates. We have some information here and on the screen. I wanted to talk through the results from yesterday's pricing. So, real quickly on the cover, just wanted to point out, you'll notice on the cover page, the final pricing produced $81 million in par amount. The certificate sold at a premium yesterday, and we'll see later in the presentation materials, that par amount plus the premium that was generated will produce 93 million to the city in terms of construction dollars. Real quickly, on the next page, as mentioned, yesterday was the pricing. There were four underwriters involved. Frost Bank led the syndicate. There was a packet of information prepared about a week prior to the pricing. The underwriters used that information to solicit investor demand, and yesterday, as mentioned, the final demand was taken, and Frost Bank came back to us with the bid to underwrite, and we have the results here for that bid. Next tab under Page 1, this is what we call the sources and uses of funds. It's more or less the nuts and bolts of the transaction. Okay, there we go. It's on the screen. Okay, there we go, it's on the screen. As mentioned before, the par amount of the debt, this is the amount the city will pay interest on, is the eighty-one million. Twelve-point-seven million was produced in premium. Together, those amounts will pay for the financing costs and produce the ninety-three million to the construction fund on the closing date. And that date's scheduled for September twelfth. The funds would be delivered to the city with approval tonight. The documents go down to the Texas Attorney General, and it takes about thirty days for Attorney General review. And then, real quickly, you'll notice towards the middle of the page, the true interest cost, or what we call the effective rate, came in at a two-point-six-two-nine percent. Each of the certificates would sell at a different rate. The effective rate is a two-point-six-two-nine. Next page, Page Two, this is a repayment schedule or debt service schedule. You'll notice in year 2020, the principal and interest payments will total six-point-seven-six-six million. That's in line with the budget that's been discussed and developed. And then you'll notice thereafter, given the favorable interest rates, the actual payments will decline and remain level at five-point-nine-five million or thereabouts through 2039. Next page, just more details on the transaction. The actual interest rates or yields range from one-point-oh-one percent, that would be in 2020, up to two-point-three-nine percent in 2039. As I've mentioned before, that results in that two-point-six-two percent effective rate. The certificates are callable in 2028. The city would have the option to repay the certificates early if you choose to do so, or refinance or refund for savings if the market allows at that time. You're not obligated to do so, but you do have that option in 2028. Next section, we thought it'd be important just to highlight interest rates in general. This chart goes back to 1999. You'll see the blue line jagged, the squiggly blue line. That represents one of the indices we follow in the municipal bond market, and you can see here the last few weeks, on the far right of the chart, we've more or less reached all-time lows in terms of municipal interest rates. Last time we saw low levels such as this was back in 2016, and so we're back to all-time lows. And then, not shown on this chart, but one of the other rates we follow in our market is the ten-year treasury. We feel like that's a good indication of markets in general. And back before Christmas, 2018, that ten-year treasury rate was at a three-twenty. Today, we're at a one-sixty-five. So you can see, just given the trend in interest rates, a very good time to be in the market and to lock in rates. Just giving some of the commentary for those that follow markets, there is talk about rates possibly going to zero, which it doesn't get much lower than that, but very good time in terms of historic historical interest rates. Next page is same information, just in table form. This is a weekly index, so it's a good way to track the trends in terms of interest rates going back to 2005 in this case. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Glenn Opel with Bracewell Bond Counsel to the City has prepared the ordinance. The terms provided from yesterday's price and have been drafted into the ordinance here before you tonight, so.
Any questions from council?
Timing is everything, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Ms. Muntzey?
Do y'all have any questions or anything you would like Mr. Opel to go over with y'all on the ordinance?
Questions?
Anything you need to do. Then I guess we're ready for a vote.
Okay, we do have two citizens who would like to speak, so we'll recognize Richard Pierce at thirty-seven forty-four Crestview. Mr. Pierce, you'll have three minutes.
Well, thank you, Mayor and councilmen and ladies, for this time. I know that we need new water, sewer, and roads for our growing community. We need a new fire station. We need animal control building. Need to upgrade the parks and existing buildings for the city. But I feel like ninety-three million dollars in obligation bonds are without, is a lot to approve without putting it to the voters. I know each of you have put a lot of time and effort in this, and I appreciate that. Thank you for the, all the time you put into this, but that's a lot of debt. I trust your judgment and the wisdom of the council, but we, the people, we, the people put our trust in you when we elected you, but something this large, I believe, should be put to the residents of Odessa. Personally, my household, we would vote for it because we know, we know, we need, we need these items. But whatever you decide to do, please don't put it off any longer, because the price will only go up. So, again, thank you for your time and effort you put into this.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. The next one is Elaine Goler. I apologize, I'm sure I missed that name on. And you'll have three minutes.
Yes, sir. I, I thank the town council for giving me this opportunity to speak, and like Proter Sarah, the gentleman just said, I agree that this, this should come before the people who are governed, because in the beginning of this great nation, there were lots of individuals that liked to put things, slip things through the cracks, and it didn't benefit all we, the people. In this case, improvements must be in benefit all we, the people, not just part of we, the people. Economy can go up, economy can go down, but something this big has to be put before we, the people. Otherwise, you go into systems of anarchy, and things, they're making decisions for people, and you don't, we don't know what's going on. We trust you to make the decisions, but you mu, you need to be more open and have more elections on this. Ninety-three million dollars is something that must be put before we, the people. We, the people, have a voice in all of this, from he who cannot pay his rent to he who runs a million-dollar house. I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Grimaldo, is there any more?
I believe we have one more. Former council member, Mike Gardner.
He needs to fill out a card. Lower chairs.
First thing I'd like to say, my name is Mike Gardner. I live at 513 St. Mary's Circle in Odessa, District Four. First off, I'd like to thank you guys for what you do. I, I know exactly what you guys are going through right now with the decision to do this. I would just, I, I understand the ninety-three million, and, and I, I'm, I'm, like Mr. Pierce, I understand the needs probably better than a lot of people really understand them, because we've seen, we went over for four years when I was on here. I do have concerns about issuing the debt without approval of voters, and, and, and one thing that you guys think about too is, you know, the evil state of Texas looks at all of this kind of things like this, and they don't like things crammed down people's throat. That's why they come up with all these little laws that everybody hate, or that city managers and all hate, right? Am I right, Mike? But this is a reason why that we have to elect good state officials, because to come down and protect us from this kind of a thing right here. I, I think it should be, it should be done, and I know you have the right to do, do what you're, what you're gonna do. Other thing is, I, you know, I see nothing in stone. I, I see, do we have, do we have it written down in stone, what this ninety-three is going on? Is it, or is it something you guys can just mess with how you want to, like you did the hundred-and-thirty-one million on the water project? You know, what, is it, is it just, I mean, if you decide to build one fire station, that's okay? If you decide to tear one down and build one over on Graham View so everybody can go by and look and see how nice we've done our deal? Are we gonna put two fire stations in North Odessa where they need them? You know, I, I would like, I would feel better if I knew what we were gonna spend the money on, instead of, well, we're gonna do a few roads, and we're gonna do a little of this, we're gonna do a little of that. I'd like to see what we're gonna spend it on. I mean, I, I've talked to most all of you guys. Y'all, y'all know my, y'all know my feelings. Like I say, I know it's not an easy decision, what you're up against, and I don't have a problem with the ninety-three million. I would like for there to be some accountability to what you're spending the money on. I would like to be able to look on the website and say, yeah, we're gonna tear this fire station down on Brentwood, and we're gonna build a new central fire station on Maple. If that's what we're gonna do with it, then let's put it out there and show us what you're gonna do with it. You know, if we're gonna build a park in District Two, I don't know where, but you're gonna build parks over there, let us see where you're gonna do that, and don't just, just look up one day and, oh, well, we're gonna do this or that with it, you know. I'd, I'd like to see some accountability with it. I know, you, you and I talked about that duty, you know, and Deidre and Tom, Mary, that's what I would like to see coming from a citizen. I, I understand the, you know, the county's faced with a deal. Y'all probably did good getting ahead of them. I'll give y'all that.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Grimaldo, anymore?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, now we move to, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I would if I could, just having talked to some citizens, waking up at four o'clock this morning, thinking about this, just a couple of things I'd like to say, and I, I wrote it so that I wouldn't ramble and I could get through it. But just to the citizens, I want you to know that we do hear you. We hear you very loud, and we hear you very clear. We hear you first because you elected us to be in these positions, positions that not any of us take lightly, positions that require us to think of you at all times in every decision that we make, positions that require us to spend countless hours here at City Hall, at our homes, when most people are nestled in their bed at night, we are oftentimes up, thinking of you and the decisions that we have to make. Trust me when I say, I don't make any decision without listening to the facts and presentations, researching options and best practices, and asking and listening to the facts and presentations. They are tough decisions that we have to make, but we ask the tough questions of staff and those amongst us when we look at everything, talking to and thinking of the citizens, because at the end of the day, we are you. We are citizens of Odessa. We are voters. We are taxpayers, and I, as a retired school teacher, living on a fixed income now, I am you. We accept with all sincerity the task that as elected officials have been set before us, and I want you, the citizens, to know that when the tough decisions have to be made, we will do just that to the best of our ability. Concerning the decision and vote that we are about to make on the certificate of obligation, we hear you, and we also hear the cry of our city staff, who we trust to make tough decisions daily. We have one of the hardest-working groups of people in this city. They run our city in the best of times, and they run our city in the worst of times. They do what has to be done with what they have to do it with. We wholeheartedly support them and their efforts, and thank them for their hard work. We thank them for making sure that some of our, some of the major needs in our city are met. And I will vote yes, because the issues that will be addressed in the CO that, if it passes tonight, are not just wants from our staff, but they are dire needs, and only some of the needs that are being met. Many of these needs, in my opinions, are in very critical condition, and some even on life support. The CO is an avenue to bring them to a stable condition. I don't believe it is being fiscally irresponsible. I feel to not address the issues and let them die, and then eventually having to attempt to revive them from death would be fiscally irresponsible. Keep in mind that we are, that these are truly needs and not wants. If the issue passes, it will begin to address what we have heard US citizens ask for over the years: infrastructure improvements to roads and drainages, new animal shelters, much-needed help in the area of fire protection, fire safety and police protection, and rehabilitation to our parks. In other words, streets, health, and safety, and quality of life. These areas are very, very important to us as citizens of the City of Odessa. I want to thank the citizens who I've talked to, who have called me, and also who elected us to help make, to, to make difficult decisions such as these for our city, the citizens who have voiced their opinions and given us reasons to always be on our toes when we're making these decisions, as well as the ones who quietly support us. We truly hear you, because we are you. Thanks.
Any other council members?
I'd like to point out one thing, and I, I think it's extremely important that we pointed out. We have truly been blessed in the timing of this going out to being bid. You know, our effective tax rate is two-point-six-two-nine. Cindy, what, what does that make a difference in regards to we're able to take ninety-three million, eighty-one million dollars roughly for the same purpose of ninety-three? Is that the way to put it in simple English?
It's a blessing.
Absolutely. Blessing.
Any other comments from council? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
That item is, that request is for this item.
Okay, I couldn't read the ten. Mr. Larry? I couldn't read the one and the zero, so you can come up, you'll have three minutes.
I apologize, I thought it started seven. I checked the website today, it said workshop six and meeting is seven. I'd like to just.
Because it's usually, it's been five and six for.
It, it does say six and seven, though. Okay.
Ms. Grimaldo, will you check that?
I will.
Three minutes, okay?
Yes, sir.
I want to start, ask a few questions that I presented to council on June 21st. Mike Morrow asked about the public meeting to show public the end of the heart of the program. This was a request for line items, descriptions of projects for which funds would be used. I would, you told me there would be two public meetings set for this purpose. Were they ever set?
The meetings, go ahead.
Sir, this was, this is part of that public meeting process.
Okay, and so this is it. I also asked you about the percentage of repayment on ad valorem versus revenue. You deferred that until the property tax valuation was certified.
At the time you asked, we did not have final values, correct?
Right, what is percentages?
Cindy, percentages, I, I guess we.
Of revenue versus ad valorem on repayment.
On the re, on the debt side?
Yes.
Ms. Muntzey?
Debt is repaid out of property tax.
Right, almost a hundred percent, with the exception of a thousand dollars. Okay. I'm sorry, I answered that myself. And also asked you about the DAG per capita indebtedness of Odessa, and at the time you gave me a number of four-fifty, was that correct?
No.
And I was, did you base that number, the ninety-three million dollars, is it based anywhere on relying on the four-fifty number? Was it taken into consideration?
We, as a result of this debt issuance, we will have a, a higher debt per capita. I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Beforehand, I believe it's already eleven-forty or nine-sixty. It's almost twice what you identified. I've done my homework a little bit. I'm speaking out in support of the public, whose opinion does not support handling of their money through an unapproved debt obligation or CO. The homeowners will be taxed to the maximum allowed by statute up to fifteen percent increase in property appraisals that were certified last month. In addition, another seven percent in revenue becomes available because of new construction. This is a total increase of twenty-one percent in taxable property that becomes available for the next budget. This is miracle money for the miracle city. This year's tax appraisal protest increased greatly to the extent that it netted thirty-eight percent more protest than at eighteen, more than seventeen, and more than sixteen. Homeowners are protesting, higher valuation equal higher taxes. This is a non-bond debt issue on which taxpayers are not allowed to vote. I think the city wants to save real bond issues to cover numerous other projects so that we all know about. I'm not gonna mention online item, but there's a lot of them that, that we have our, our favorites, it seems like. And then I'm gonna move on to, since I've got three minutes. Thank you. This is a bitter pill encapsulated in a decorative and tasty presentation. The city is narrowing their vote, voter support for much-needed future bond issues. The city's been due.
Sir, your three minutes are up.
Pardon?
Your three minutes are up.
Can I, wait, read one more paragraph? I had to wait for questions. I was responding.
That's fine, just go ahead and read that paragraph.
Okay, the city has been due in the margin of state debt code. There is no emergency, there's no disaster. Many citizens have used this method of circumventing the public votes to envelop their taxpayers with huge debt. There should be a bond issue for the voters to decide the need of another debt obligation. People will vote to support their need. They will not support efforts that are presented with lack of trust, lack of transparency, or lack of communication. There have been no public meetings. There have been no posting on the bulletin boards, even in this building, the website, or news portions of Odessa American. The legal notice was not even posted on the bulletin board in this building. I couldn't find a Spanish posting anywhere. This is a model, model of brevity and exercise of questionable powers granted to this city council by its own interpretation of the state's debt obligation guidelines. Please don't go forward with this. Give the people a chance to vote.
Okay.
Excuse me, sir, would you mind giving your name and address? We couldn't read it.
Larry Robinson, 2219 East State.
Thank you.
I apologize, I was hurrying, I was late.
Okay. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
The motion is yet, okay.
Mayor, council, for the record, the posting on the website does say five o'clock briefing and six o'clock city council meeting.
Okay. Thank you for checking that. Okay, item eleven, consider revision to the city ordinance that adds a section addressing excesses, excessive absenteeism by the golf committee. Mr. Patton? Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of worried about those zero interest rates. I'm not gonna be able to retire, Mayor. Do you need a part-time job? Sorry, that's kinda scaring me there. Anyway, the golf course advisory committee, the previous one, actually, we had a problem with absenteeism, and when we only meet six times a year, that's getting to be a real problem for me to have a clear vote and try to new policies and implement those policies. So, that particular group came forward with, three times, you're absent. Fourth time, you're off the advisory board. So, I brought this forward to the new advisory board. We've got some new members, and they reinforced that. So, we've come forward with a recommendation, three absences in a year, which would be fifty percent, since we only meet six times on a regular scheduled meeting. That fourth absent will kick you off the part... I mean, off the golf course advisory board. We have a similar type absentee policy with the parking recreation advisory board, and it keeps people coming when they need to be there. And helps us with getting a quorum when we have advisory board policies. Any questions or anything?
Any questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Great, thank y'all.
Consider amending the city... the Odessa City Code, Chapter Three, Business Regulations. I believe that's Mr. Brenly.
I ask Ms. Correa if I could appear before y'all, because I never get to come before y'all in any way.
We missed you.
Yeah. Last year, the council adopted the twenty-seventeen National Electrical Code along with amendments. And on these amendments, there was basically a mistake that what was left out was under the vertical clearance and overhead service conductor section of local amendments. Should've had a... from adjacent grade. It just had a twelve-foot clearance. So, we have many, many houses out here that have a pole that's sticking up from the roof line twelve feet with clearance up here. And this is actually a request from Encore also. They have... require a three-foot clearance from the roof grade. This would correct that and allow a three-foot clearance for electrical connections at the house.
Okay.
And that's basically what it is boiled down in a nutshell.
Any questions from Mr. Brenly? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen has already been approved, so we move item fourteen. Consider approving the tax increment reinvestment zone number one bylaws.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. This agenda item is to consider the approval of bylaws for the downtown tax reinvestment zone number one, which is also known as the Downtown Tiers Board. A set of bylaws were drafted by the city's legal department, and they were then reviewed by the city's tiers consultant. And each were approved there, and it was forwarded by a recommendation from the tiers board to council with a unanimous vote that these bylaws be approved and put into place.
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, we do have a citizen who would like to speak, Ms. Elaine. I guess she's already left. Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item fifteen, consider accepting the recommendation of the board of directors of the tax increment reinvestment zone. Philip?
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, this agenda item is to approve the recommendation of the tiers... downtown tiers board for the appointment of Toby Oof to the chairperson position for the downtown tiers board. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider appointing council member Tom Sproles to the Permian Basin Metropolitan Planning Organization. This is the motorboard. Since I'm getting closer to the end, I think especially with everything that's happening on roads, we need to appoint somebody that can learn over the next year so that when I move off, we have somebody on there. So, Tom said he was interested, so I will open this up for discussion and see what everybody thinks.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, okay, motion and a second? Sorry, Tom. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Close the door.
All... all opposed? Motion passes. The reason we had to do this this way is we have to have a resolution to actually have them appointed onto that board. So, I will go to the meeting next time, sit, and vote for Tom, and then run out the door. So...
What was that, one-year training, or what'd you say?
I don't remember that part, sorry. Item seventeen, consider proposal to establish the maximum tax rate of zero point four seven six six oh one for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. Ms. Muntz?
Mayor, council, this agenda item is to propose to establish the maximum tax rate of point four seven six six oh one per one hundred dollars valuation for fiscal year nineteen twenty. The ma... the proposed rate is higher than the effective rate, which is point three nine four six four eight. It is lower than the rollback rate of point four eight three eight eight six, and represents no change compared to last year's adopted rate of point four seven six six oh one. Due to the proposed tax rate being greater than the effective tax rate, we are required to hold public hearings. They will be held on August the twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, at six o'clock, and on September the tenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six o'clock, in compliance with the truth in taxation requirements. The final vote of the proposed tax rate will occur at two meetings. September the twenty-third will be the first, September twenty-fourth will be the second. Our total valuations came in this year at ten million, one hundred... Ten billion, that's a hard number, it's ten billion, one hundred and thirteen million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. We get a average home taxable value from the appraisal district. The average home value last year was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six sixty-four. That produced a city tax of six hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents. The average home tax value for two thousand and nineteen is a hundred and forty-four thousand, oh eighteen. And that produces, at the same tax rate, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. So, that is a sixty-eight dollar increase for the year on the city property taxes for the average home value. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. Again, this is just setting the proposed rate so that we can have the two mandatory budget... tax rate hearings and then the tax vote.
Okay, any questions from council? We do have one citizen who would like to speak, Mr. Pierce, from thirty-seven forty-four Crestview.
Hello again.
Hello.
Thank you again for your time on this one. I support it. I'll support as long as we keep the tax rate the same. I say this knowing my property taxes will go up, but the city needs the money, inflation. We need the money for the services. Just don't raise the rate in the future. As long as we keep the same rate, I'll be for it. As long as we have fair property appraisals, I can live at the same rate. But just wanted to let you know I support this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Appointments of boards. Ms. Cramaldo?
For the zoning board of adjustment, reappoint Ludi Warner. For the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, appoint Dow Kelly and Virgil Trower.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we need to recess into executive session to consider the evaluation of the applicants for position of city attorney, including the possible appointment of a new city attorney as authorized by Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one point zero seven-four Personnel Matters. I will entertain a motion to go into executive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now in executive session at seven o'clock. We're going to call a meeting back to order. I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to come out of executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is seven thirty-one. We are now out of executive session, and we did not take any action while we were in executive session. I will entertain a motion.
I move to appoint Natasha Brooks as city attorney for the city of Odessa. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Brooks, if you would come and take your seat, we will change the name tag. Okay. Ms. Brooks, would you like to say anything as city attorney?
I would. I would like to thank the mayor and city council for this opportunity. It's an opportunity that I don't take lightly. I want everybody to know that I am committed to the city of Odessa. I... I want to recognize the legal staff. They're here, if y'all will stand. The legal staff that we have at the city of Odessa is amazing, and I'm so grateful to be able to work with them. And I look forward to working with you guys, and I think we will have a lot of great things to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to say that I really enjoy working with most of the departments here at the city of Odessa. And I look forward to continue to working with all the departments and city management as a team. My family is here for support, whether I was named city attorney or not. So, I just want to thank them for their support. They're there for me, and I appreciate them. This is just an awesome opportunity for me. We have a lot of work to do. So, I'm ready to move forward tomorrow and starting down that path. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this completes the agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are... we are adjourned.